Seven o'clock, it's, I'll call the March meeting in Huntington Township Planning Commission order. Anyone on the agenda, let's see, is there a public comment on agenda items?
Oh, well.
Is there any? Anybody have anything to?
Ask them?
Yeah, that's fine, man. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? If not, we'll move on. Next item is approval of minutes of the February meeting. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Right here, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes for your record.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Or on the second, if Kyle orders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, salute. Alright, Gus. Zoning officers report, are you ready?
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna start with subdivision for 4J Farm LLC and Cranberry Road. That, we accepted that. The next one is permit 24-027 for Garmin Builders. That's on Tammy Drive. I'll have to look up the address, because I missed it. Permit 25-003 is for Martin Dayberry over on the Gun Club Road. He's building a garage addition to the front of the house. BP-006 to Rachel Isaac at 95 Tracy Drive. She's putting 29 rooftop solar panels on her house. He issued an occupancy permit to Chapel Hill Church of God on 4521 Oxford Road. They're gonna put a daycare center in the building for kids, one to five. Twelve, twelve of them. I guess that's all they can listen to. Then there's 25-008, which was a renewal of a permit that was issued in 23 from Mark Lear in 525 Rolling Road. That's to finish his house and garage. Permit BP-25-009 to AT&amp;T LLC, which is the cell tower on White Church Road. Sits there, it's got a fence around it. And it is owned by Crown Castle Corporation, which is out of Boston. They're gonna install antennas for T-Mobile on their tower. Permit BP-25-010 to Tony Starner on Georgetown Road. He's gonna put an addition on his house for a thirty by twenty, oh, excuse me. It dropped off, it's sixteen by twenty foot addition for the office addition and then a thirty by twenty foot garage, two car garage. A waiver letter to Terry Kohler at 391 Idenville York Springs Road for a replace existing roof and gutters. Brian Potts at 8164 Carlisle Pike BP-011. He's gonna put up a thirty-one by fifty-foot pole barn and he has a retention pond on that property. He's gonna run the water into it. And BP-25-012 to Raymond Huffer up on Labor Camp Road. Ron's neighbor. He's gonna remove a single-wide mobile home and replace it with a sixteen-hundred square foot double mobile home. Darren Allman, BP-24-041 on Old Harrisburg Road. He's replacing a six-by-eight-foot deck. And I issued a permit for this instead of a waiver because he has to replace the posts that hold the porch. And those have to be inspected. So, he's got a permit. Then, Cole Millhimes at 5254 Oxford Road. Permit 25-013. He's building a sixty-by-ninety-six-foot barn for his horses. And that grew out of the Conservation District. Chapel Hill Church of God, in the process of getting their occupancy permit for their daycare center, they discovered their well is a dug well and they need to dig a new one. So, I issued a well permit to them. And the last one is BP-25-015, 255 White Church Road, LCDM. They're gonna build a fifty-foot by fifty-foot office addition to that building. That's a former Miller Sports Complex. Those are all the permits. Also, received a subdivision from Latimer, or Tyrone Township. The entire subdivision is in Tyrone. It's along Oxford Road, but there's a piece across the creek that runs from the creek, Bermudian Creek, to Willow Lane. And that's in Huntington Township, so we gotta sign off on it. Right now, the only submission I have from them is electronic one. And we'll have to, when they submit the signed one by Tyrone Township, then we know that everything's alright in Tyrone. We know everything's alright in Huntington. And then we can sign that.
Gus, what's the name of that subdivision, sorry?
That subdivision is, um, hmm, hold on. Yeah, Christie and, uh, I'll give it to you before it's over.
Alright, that's alright.
I'm gonna put up on the board, you might be able to read it. And that's about all I got.
This next item is Scott saying, here's a report.
Oh, hold on here. Brad and Christie Hill, Tyrone Township. I know, I had something like that. Alright, mm, I'm here, report. Mm, right there. There you are.
Greenbrier Road, the majority of that work is done. We just have some cleanup and some road and drainage improvements along the road. The Myers Town, the project's out to bed. The bids are due at the next supervisor's meeting, April 10th. Ongoing updates to the subdivision land development, still working with Andrew. We're pretty, pretty close to being done with that now. We're working on the last section. I have not heard any news about EV clearing. Conservation District is working with the property on that. Current plans, JVI was conditionally approved at the last meeting. And 4J Farm, single lot subdivision. Board actions required by May 25th. And all of their comments have been addressed and I think they're ready for conditional approval.
So, they addressed it, please. Your comments dated back in February, yes?
Mm-hmm.
February 6th, 2010. That's alright. Is that it? Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to old business, then.
Mm-hmm. The JVI, Scott mentioned their plan was conditionally approved by the board and by us as the planning commission. So, that, waiting for the final presentation that, so we can take that off the agenda then. Not till then. And tonight, we have a report on LCDM and, Len?
You have some drawings and pictures up there, Gus?
Yeah, let me get those up there.
We have cleared this site. It was scrubbed out, brush removed, piles of brush were removed. Basically, all the garbage was cleaned off the site. The entrance to the site was not properly based out for stone. So, we did improve the entrance to the site and put the proper stone in. So, we had a construction base. You look at picture. Yeah, we left half of it with number, number three, number four ballast so we can clean tires through any construction. The other half is finished. But we have wanted up to spec for a proper entrance off of Waydo. Stoned every, leveled everything out, cleaned it out and stoned the area, working area, to keep it a clean site for now. We've submitted a plan to, for an office for a building permit. It's 2,500 square feet. We've also submitted for sewer, there was never any septic system put on that property. We have submitted all the applicable paperwork for a septic system, which will be installed as soon as conditions are proper to install that system. We also want the attempt at restrooms that existed in the building up to date and made our ADA compliant restrooms within the existing structure. Even though we can't use them yet. As soon as the septic's in, we will have proper restroom facilities there. We went ahead, the well was drilled, but it was never put into use. So, we had to drop a pump in the well and pressure tank and all those things associated with the building. And that's completed also.
In addition, you're gonna add one, is that out, out this, like where the equipment and trucks?
Yeah, right where the equipment is, there.
Out this way?
Did you guys paint the building? Okay, I guess with all the brushroom.
You can see it now, right?
It looks locked up.
The structure itself was in new condition. There was really never anything done there other than there was some shoddy erection work that needed to be cleaned up inside and we've taken care of a lot of that. And because we're commercial property, we wanted ADA compliant restrooms. So, the restrooms have been reconfigured to be ADA compliant.
Would you have a nice parking spot for us, like the one out there?
Where?
In our lot.
When we get there, we, a long way to go to get there.
Looks a lot different.
Yeah.
Looks much better.
Land development's moving forward for the entire property. Chris Hoover is one revision number two for us before we do submit it to make revisions to the property. So, we do anticipate submitting one land development with three phases of construction.
It's like the sketch you showed us in the, yeah?
Yeah, yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Thanks for, you're just here for anything, keep us updated.
Yeah, that's all I wanna do.
We appreciate that, yeah, thanks, man.
We're so glad you bought it, too.
In the long run, we'll get it to where we want it. But been a lot invested just to make it clean up.
Cleaned up, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next, I guess the next item is, have the sound over vision, you said move up to the end of the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, so we can, uh, go on to the 4J Farm subdivision. Ten, right? Plan up there, right?
Yeah. It came to the sewage enforcement officer's attention that there was no replacement area on the, on the proposed lot. So, last week, we did soil testing for the replacement area and therefore, our planning module needs to be revised. We were submitting an exemption. But now, we need to submit component one. So, we'll be revising our planning module. So, there's no planning module to review at this time for that plan. But all, all comments have been addressed on this plan. The property that this is coming from has been placed in the conservancy. The note on the first sheet has been updated with that recording information. So, we're, we're at a point that this lot cannot be altered.
And you do.
But we think it's moving forward, I mean, we've got replacement testing on the property, on the lot now. So, everything looks good that way.
I think you have that.
That's not gonna create any problems. You've got plenty of room for it.
Yes. Sheet three shows where the primary and the replacement area.
Are there any waivers or anything that need to be addressed in this scale, on scale?
No, that doesn't.
That doesn't pertain to lots, a lot, I mean, that's like overall. That's why I was thinking it's, the lot itself is on issue, like 50 scale or something? There's a question, got the lot two or lot four, quick about it?
Yes.
Basically, when they did the perp, they didn't do a second one? Is that kinda what happened?
Yeah.
They have approved of the test.
Yes. We did that last Wednesday. Because all that was done previously was two deep probes and the perks for the primary system, but no testing was done for the replacement area. It came to his attention that we needed to do that.
That's good. Taken care of. It looks like, oh, I'll have to sign and notarize and have to have the module prepared. I have to map it. Ooh, that one, plans. Anybody see anything, any questions?
Did I forget that on, or did they?
So, you know, notarizing the plan and all that and the, and the.
And the module, those are the two things we need. So, we could, conditional.
On those two items.
Right.
I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval, conditional approval of the, that's 4J Farm LLC plan. Conditions being sewage planning module and notarization signatures on the cover sheet. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Roxy made a motion, second that, second tomorrow. Any questions? Jeff, are you still?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
All who's in favor, say aye.
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 Post.
Who seconded that?
Marlon.
Marlon.
Marlon, okay, thank you.
See, just get that module into us and sign that.
Soon as I get the reports from sewage enforcement officer, we'll get that module updated.
Recommend to the board supervisor.
Yeah, recommend the conditional approval based on these two items.
Thanks, Ken.
Ken, you want these plans or you want?
No.
I'll take one of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's the other, that says consideration future. There's zoning items listed, but it changes. I think what, looking, I read through all of them and I think the best thing, at least this is my thought, most of you think that part of schedule isn't busy. We can handle, we work through the subdivision of this. Gives us something to do, you know, work on.
Alright.
We can work at those zoning items.
Items that come up.
Yeah, if we spend a half an hour or an hour, if there's nothing else going on, I mean, that's still time to come in here, you know, we've got, maybe. Quite a list, but some of them might go through fairly quickly. Yes, um, I would've said that, I guess the next thing I'd like to be the sound of Andy. You're on the spot.
Gus, do you have anything for the Tyrone more than what you already told us?
The only thing I have is a picture.
Is that still Cult Rider Farm?
Yeah.
Exactly.
What are they, the subdivisions?
Well, we're subdividing a couple lots off it.
Okay.
And it's in their residential zone, according to this. And of course, the part that's in Huntington is up here. Very long, between the creek and the road.
Can't do nothing there.
No.
No, not really, it's a floe. Yeah.
Okay.
Is that tough, Roxy, is that touching ear to ear or maybe around here? Probably up there on.
Yeah, it comes up, butts up against the covered bridge.
Covered bridge, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The two lots are up against the existing houses, right?
When you go across the covered bridge, then you're immediately on there.
Yeah. What are they, what are they doing, guys?
There are two lots down here.
They're just, they're below the existing building, right?
The existing, the existing residential lots.
Or swallow.
Right there.
This one, this one. Alright, you can't read it really, so I'm waiting to get the vapor plant. Just wanted you to know that that's coming.
Their house is on the ground, they're cornered, right there.
Well, they've built a new one.
Yeah, they put, torn the old one down, put.
Double one.
Double wide up, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not double wide.
Well, I mean, two.
Basically, it looked like.
They brought them in, yeah.
Are they two different styles than new lots?
Who the hell can read it? Roxy, it's really not hard to discern it.
No, no.
Yeah. Here's like that little strip up there and the.
Right up there in the top. Between.
The creek and the other, right there.
Yeah. That's Roxy wants his settlement on swampland.
Right? What'd you give us today?
So, this is the revised definition section. All your edits and a couple things that Scott and I need to show you cleaning up. Page three, you see I have the phrase highlighted there. It's showing you that we added that term in there under the definition developer. If you go back to page 10, you'll see I have, so there's one, two, three, there's five different terms highlighted there. All have to do with sewer and sewage. When Scott and I met on Friday, we spent most of the time going through the ordinance and the def, because there were, geez. Two, three, four, five, there were seven different terms for sewage and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 different terms for sewer. And they didn't always mean what they were supposed to mean with the way, where they were used. So, we've narrowed it down to these five here. And some of them you see reference others. So, where it says, where we're using the term sewer, we're talking about the piping or facilities for collecting and conveying sewage or stormwater runoff. That's, that's the mechanical side of it. Where we, where we use the term sewage, that's talking about the effluent that we're getting rid of. Disposal system, sewage disposal system is referencing one property, one use. Treatment system is referencing two or more, pulling those pretty much. Treatment system is referencing two or more, pulling those, pretty much from the state law that covers those sort of things. We've spent a lot of time, a lot of the different ways it was used, it was, it was simply like clarifying, it's like private sewer, you know, that, that sort of thing. It's, we talked about the ownership, where the, of clarifying what it, how it was functioning, not what it was actually doing. So, we think those five terms make it a little cleaner and more consistent throughout the whole, and there's, there's a whole bunch of changes that we made throughout the rest of the, the rest of this SADO, which I did not bother to show you all of that. The only other thing that I, I highlighted on page five, and this is something that's kind of related to the zoning stuff. One of the issues we found, when it comes to stormwater ordinance as it relates to subdivision ordinance and zoning, is there's a difference between what the stormwater ordinance, what we're just, would consider impervious and what you might wish, want to be considered impervious from a zoning perspective. For example, under stormwater ordinance, you could have, say, a 10 acre property that has, you know, five acres under building and five acres of pervious paving, and by this, by the stormwater, it would only be 50%. From a zoning perspective, you might not want, it would, it would be considered, you know, if you consider the pervious paving imperv, you know, pervious for a zoning perspective, now you have a whole property that's essentially paved, you know, and a lot of it is trying to put some limitations on that. So, one of the ways that we've seen this done is, and I highlight, highlight this because this, again, this is a zoning issue, that we would want to put the same depth terms here in this, in the SADO. Is, and you have a little bit of this in some of your zoning districts where you have a, like an impervious coverage percentage and then a building percent, a minimum maximum building percentage. The approach that we've seen is you do a imperv, like a pervious coverage, a lock coverage percentage, and then a vegetative coverage percentage. And usually, it equals 100, so if you have a impervious, you know, pervious coverage percentage of 40%, the vegetative cover 60%. What that, what that does is, it says, it says that, okay, from a zoning perspective, what we're saying is impervious, we mean is impervious. And what we, everything else, we mean that's vegetation, that's not, you're not putting pervious paving in there, you're not putting some, some other trick in there. We mean it's natural of some sort. It sort of closes a loophole that's cropped up as pervious techniques become more popular. Again, the chin, will you guys face a lot of that? No, probably not. Will, will more developed municipalities face that? Yeah, they will and are. But if you, it's also the side of the sort of thing that when it crops up here, you're going to want, they're going to want something to help with that. So, if, if you're, if that's something you're interested in, the, the lock coverage and vegetative, vegetative coverage sent, par definitions would come in. The last sentence highlighted under impervious surface would be removed. That, that would be, be the potential change. So, that would, that, the effect would be from a subdivision zoning perspective, everything that's, when it says impervious, it means impervious surface. When it says vegetative, it means everything else has to be vegetation of some sort.
I, I have a question, you said an example of a pervious surface. I was at a home some time ago where the whole driveway was these blocks that looked like large checkers, and in between was grass. Now, is that considered an impervious driveway or impervious?
It could be impervious, depending on what those rock checkers are sitting of.
Okay, I agree.
It means they're, they're blocks, you know.
Right, but what, what Gus is saying, if they're sitting basically on a stone dust bed and compacted down.
Yep.
It would be.
You know, I don't know what's under them.
Well, I got a block back in my office that's shaped somewhat crosswise, but it's meant to be mounted on about a foot of.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I'm asking because I was curious as to what it is considered, you know, because it looks like, you know.
Yeah.
A grass with.
Well, I saw in Carlisle. There, there are blocks, and then there's a space in between, like a hole, and that's got a tuft of grass growing up.
Right.
And you mow it with a weed whacker, but that's considered imperv, or pervious for the sake of that development. It's a driveway.
This was, this was a driveway probably, well, probably six, 700 feet long. It's out there off of the, at Gettysburg, in the woods there, next to the peace lake. It belongs to. The developer.
Lot?
No, 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 site.
They make, they make plastic grit that you don't even see, it just looks like lawn. If it spreads the load out from the tire.
I'll give you that. I have a great example, example. Any of you familiar with the wedding barn there off of Dixdam Road? Bitter sweets, whatever, there's a grass area to the creek side that is parking lot, but they have the geotextile reinforced plastic that's been pushed down to reinforce the grass, to use that as a next parking area. That sort of thing, that, that's interesting that from a, that ordinance perspective, which is, which uses this model, that's considered pervious there. Now, if something like, if you're familiar with the, like, where the, the Ag Center.
Yeah.
You come in, in the drive, main driveway, there's the park, pay parking to the right, then there's the overflow there to the, to the left.
To the, yeah.
That's the, that's those, kind of what you're, what you're talking about. That's, that's closer to perv, to pervious. The interesting thing about that is, and I, you have somebody, I can't remember the name of the bird, it's the ones that nest on the ground.
Killdeer.
Killdeer.
Yes, there's a killdeer that, that very so often makes her nest right in the middle, not, where the parking areas are, right where you drive, right down in, in there is where she, she makes her nest in one of the blocks in, in there. But yeah, it's, if you walk over at that one, it's, it's all, it, there's grass growing through it.
Yeah.
But it's more weeds than anything else.
Yeah, but it's still considered impervious.
From a, from a stormwater, from a stormwater perspective, ordinance perspective, yes, from a zoning, zoning risk perspective, it's probably not. But that's, that's an example, is you're trying to make, make sure that you want the stuff that's veget, you don't want to get extra pervious surface.
Yeah.
You know, by using a loophole, so, that's, that's the theory, the theory behind it.
I get it, that's why I was.
They have that porous concrete and porous blacktop also, and, you know, we've got that, or they put that down at school, right on the track, the pervious concrete.
You have to vacuum that stuff.
If it's not maintained, it's not.
Being impervious.
It fills up with silt or something, it feels so, shouldn't be impervious.
And again.
Right, and that, that's, that's the problem, that becomes the problem, especially if it's not maintained, then.
Then stone areas hold that, hold less water than that does.
Yeah.
But they're impervious.
If they're, if they're built properly.
Yeah, they have to, have to be from the ground, say from the ground up, they have to have a base that either pours, you know, at a perk or to take, you know, piped out underneath some. Around here, it's hard to get a basis, anyone infiltrate anything.
And again, like, the example I'm putting here comes from Hamilton Township, we started this, the issue they have is infiltration in, in the formations they have, like, you're familiar up here, it doesn't, stormwater that requires infiltration only works if it'll actually infiltrate. If you're, you're on the diabase or the red clay, you're not infiltrating a lot, a lot of water, so it, what's the point of, of those techniques, so.
This, on page five there, you have surfaces, you highlight surfaces, or areas does, designed, constructed, maintained.
That, that would, that would be removed.
That'll go out.
Yeah, that would go out, and the other two definitions would come, the terms would come in. And then we, ideally mirror, theoretically mirror that into the.
So, that's what we want, we want to remove that sentence and then put in lock coverage and veget, veget, okay.
That's.
It's a gray, it's a gray area, I know, dealing with, between the soil conservation or N P V S requirements, allow certain things and, you know, it's, it's a little tricky.
Yeah, and again, the, the amount of times that you might face it are going to be different than a township that like, the kind where it comes from, that is right by Crosskey's, he gets a lot of stuff, so. But with that, with that, the, the, the SADO is pretty much not yet complete, so.
So, that is where you finish your draft.
Yeah, what I would, what I would do is probably put the draft, put the draft together and send, fold the draft together and, and send it to you. I, I don't know what your, from a perspective of the township's policy is. It, it might be a good idea to ship it to Todd, just to look through it from a legal perspective, but that's, that's your, I'll send it to Gus, you guys can decide what you want to do with it. But it, it's at that point now that we're pretty well done with it, and we can get to what, well, now, again, there are some things from the zoning perspective that go with it, but, you know, that's, that's, that's a different perspective, so I can do that and then you guys can take it from there. I, I heard what you said about the, the zoning stuff that I, that I sent out here. And again, there's a lot, there's a lot here, what I did was simply go page through the ordinance and note the stuff that I, that I saw. That doesn't, that doesn't mean it had, mean it has to change, it's just that, you know, like, here, this section, uses to add, those are the things that, you know, we discussed about, about adding. Like small wireless facilities, there's a state law that got adopted that requires that, there's specific standards apply within right ways. It's, it, it's, you got to add it whether you like it or not. You know, and a couple other things.
That homeless elevators, that's usually internal.
I did research, research that, and what I found was, in most cases, if it's contained inside the structure, it's, it's not a zoning issue, it's a code issue. It becomes a zoning issue if it, if it extends outside, and then it, then it's usually simply a pipe issue. But it's not necessarily a zone, a zoning issue by itself, it's a code, because as long as it's contained within the structure. Then, you know, like, like data centers, there's, we have a model that's floating around the county for those, those sort of things. You know, the same, I would, with those, I would say the same thing, like the warehouse and truck terminal stuff, we have new standards. You have an interchange. Now, from a top topography's perspective, it's not the easiest one to use, but it's still there, so you should probably protect yourselves with some of the standards there, just in case, because for example, warehouse want to, want to put in, come into the commercial district, it's not, no skin off their teeth to pop Southwood Road down to 94, and if they, if they really, 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 really wanted to. When they're spending eight face, what, eight figures plus on a, on a building, a property, that's nothing. So, if you don't have, have standards in there to deal with it, you're, you're behind. The only difference between data centers and warehouses is.
Trucks?
What, traffic, you know, the building's the same, building's the same size, the impacts are slightly different, one's noise, noise emissions from trucks, the other's noise and water from cooling equipment, so.
Data center require probably upgrading, like, supply into the.
Like you said, is, is there, the chances of it are low, but given the location you have here at 9415, you know, you'd probably rather be safe than sorry to not having anything in there.
Oh, just had, I mean, you guys are familiar with that down there at Hamilton Township, pressure they had in there.
In fact, we just, that, we, they, there, Wednesday, they have a special supervisors meeting to advertise the amendment for the new standards that we wrote for them, to put those, those in place, so. They have a pretty good, pretty good model there that, that covers most of the, most of the impacts, so. You know, then, a lot of it, like, uses to reevaluate, is just me identifying things of, hey, let's, you know, let's talk about some of this, some of this stuff here. The one thing I wanted to bring up here is, going through your, your, looking through your honey ordinance, as a township, you might have more conditional uses in your zoning ordinance than if the other 33 municipal in the county combined. And from a, from a perspective, like, I get it, it's either by right or it goes to supervisors. My, my question is, from a policy perspective, that, some older approaches, that's still what you want. You have some things that are listed as conditional use that have no standards with them. So, what's the point of the hearing if they have no stand, no standards with, form of standards with? That, that's, that's sort of thing that I was looking at as I, as I was going, going through it. That doesn't mean it has to change, it's just, let's, it's been 20 some years since this has been looked at, seriously, let's, let's talk about it. Then, the, the, you go through the definition section, there you can see the things that, you know, might need to be revised, might need to be looked at. The individual districts, just looking for reformatting some, some things. There's some question, like you see, it talks about discuss lock coverage and pervious coverage interaction under the AC district. That's the sort of thing we just talked about with those two definitions. There's some, some uses listed, like water, water facilities, sewage disposal system, that I'm not sure are actually use, zoning uses. I'm not, but I'm not sure where they may have come, may have, what the thinking behind them may have been where it came from, so that's why I put them down there. Under the general regulations part, the one thing that does need to be updated or signed section is an older model. The US Supreme Court case from 2015, Gilbert B. Arizona. Where they came down, where they basically said that ordinances cannot regulate sign content. That gets down to the, things like contractor signs or, if, if the only descriptor of the sign is something you can be considered, is the speech of the sign, not the size or anything like that, they've said, no, you can't do that, you can only control the, the physical elements of it, not anything that relates to what could be considered speech. So, so there's some things, it's not much, but it's things that need to be cleaned up, to take care of, take care of that. And then there, between, between, largely between the uses, standards to reevaluate, there, I can see some of the, some of the performance sections that to look, that need, need to be looked at, so. This is just my, my professional look at it, you guys take your time to look through it and see what you want, discuss what you might want. I have extra copies here, if you want to share them with the other, with the other supervisors, that's, that's perfectly fine. You know, decide what you want, want to do, and let me know and I'll, if you can go from there. If you want to, want to look at everything. If you wanna, wanna look at everything, I just, what I'd simply do is start like we did here. Start with, start with section and work our, and work our way through it and, and go, and go from there, so. There, some of the, some of the things, you know, like your, it, it, it's an older model that's very wordy. It uses text and sentences to describe things instead of tables, so you can shorten some things by streamline. Like, like the parking section, it describes every single use by a sentence, or you can table it and be, and easier to read, easier to format, lot shorter type of thing, so, um, just, just as one, as one example, so. And, uh, for some, if you have like three or four different lot side, minimum lot sizes in every single zoning district based on different sort of septic and, and water stuff, that, that's, that, that model exists. The newer ordinances are going away from that sort of thing, um, so let's. And, and some of that comes from a time when packaged utility systems were a thing. As opposed to, um, just sewer and water, a D P is not approving private package systems anymore, it's prohibitively expensive. You know, and a lot of that, if you have, if you have sewer but no water, or water but no sewer, you have these sort of things. That's a remnant of that time when they were approving those sort of systems, that they're not approving anymore.
Yeah, they clamped down on that.
Wait, so you can't just have a water system in a development?
Well, who would know, you're saying?
You can, you can, it's just, the, the stand, it's more expensive to do it that way. That, that's why you don't see, you don't see a lot, a lot of development you see now at, at a large, larger density comes off of sewer public, public systems. Or, or, or privately owned public systems like York Water or P A American, whereas, whereas the publicly traded company that owns it. The time, the time of, you know, a ten or fifteen lot subdivision that had its own little sewer and water plant, that is, it's prohibitively expensive to run those, that sort of thing, from scratch nowadays, so. And, and a lot of those that, that did exist are failing and you're seeing, so the state has a sys- has a, some standards that some of the publicly traded companies can step in and purchase and, and run those private plants that are, are water systems or sewer systems that are basically failing from either, from a, um, like, equipment side or from a financial operator side. The issue with that is the law gives them the ability to jack up the rates pretty, pretty soon, quickly. So it's a little, it's more controversial, um, there, but they do have the ability to do that. That's why the system, they're not approving those anymore because the ones that are there are getting older and are, and aren't operating very well.
Operators are another issue.
You gotta have certified operator in order of testing all the time.
And, and find, and finding people to do, to do that is a challenge.
It's hard, hardly, a small system has maybe ten, twenty people on it and trying to upgrade or replace the system after twenty-five years. All the impacts on it, just on those people, it's, it's prohibitive.
It, it's, it's hard enough for some, for something the size of the lakes here to do.
Yeah. Certified operator and.
Well, I don't know if you guys remember when, I can't think of the gentleman's name who came in and was looking at the old Davis Farm and putting a, a community development in there. And one of his ideas was to run the water up from.
Hampton.
Hampton and, uh, his big selling pri- idea to the school district was that when the feds increase the standards for, or lower the standards for arsenic, you've gotta update your system. That was his big selling point, but nobody listened.
I, I would, 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 we, we've dealt with all of the, there's three, three or four different companies that work in the, York Water, um, Aqua America, P A American Water. Of, those are the three main ones, of those three, we've always found that York Water is the one that is the, they, they very willingly respect local ordinances. If, if you, if you say, yeah, we don't want this, like, I'll take, use your map up here as an example. We, we're, we're, we're okay if it runs through here to get to, to the school district. But we don't want anything in that white area to be connected, they will run, they will, they, like, there, there's a, there's a a right of way that goes around New Oxford, down through the, the, the Hatterashe Farms and connects into West Mannheim Township, that I think it's a two-hundred-foot easement that they have there. They've, what they have agreed, they're, they're, they will not serve anything along that line unless they get specific approval from the municipality. You know, they've, they've run up to Hampton, the same thing, they've run up to Pine Run, Mobile Home Park, same thing. They act, actually the same thing that runs along Route Thirty from York all the way over to the county line. So they're, they're the one that's, they very willingly limit that, that, to, they, they play nicely with the, that planning and growth management technique, the other ones don't. Where, that, so that's, there's trade-off. The, the trade-off is York Water Company is much more expensive than the other two. So there's, it's bal- you gotta balance the things out, so. But the long way of saying that those package plans and that, those, all those different lots, like, minimum lot sizes you have, it's a remnant of that time when those package systems were being done. It might not be a hundred percent relevant anymore, it's not hurting you. But that's, you know, so, um, I have extra cop- extra copies here, I think Gus has it electronically too. So, you can share them with Gus.
Sure you get one of these, is that one you just handed out?
Um.
That's the other.
That's just, that's listening.
That's the Saldo revision.
Sure, Jared, if you want, if you want a copy, steal it to others, to supervisors to look at. I said, updating Saldo is one thing, updating, updating zoning is something different. Usually that attracts more, attracts more opinions, stronger opinions than Saldo does, so. You know, I, I, again, I'm very happy to, to, to do the same thing here that I did to Saldo. So that's, that's not a problem, but.
You have the time and work.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's not, not, not an issue, um, but given what's, given it's zoning, you know, I want to make sure that everybody on, is on board with doing that type of thing, so. You know, talk, talk it over amongst yourselves, look, you know, there and before you give, give me an, an answer to which direction you want, you want to go, so. I'm just saying that from experience of doing zoning ordinances. You gotta make sure that everybody's on board, on board with looking at things before you, you go.
Does anybody have any opinion?
Is that our decision to make or does that have to come from the supervisor?
You have to recommend it to the supervisor.
Well, you gotta give us the authority.
I think you ought to get the Saldo stuff, get the finished, and then you want to possibly move on to that, right?
It makes some sense, you know, you gotta clean up on.
Clean up the one for.
Yeah, get that one enacted there.
The only good question I have is, changes in the, any changes in the zoning, maybe, is there anything that can, you know, affect this?
There is, there's some change that would need to be made. If we're going right into it, I mean, yes, ideally we'd be making the changes in, in zoning at the same time. There's, there's nothing that, that, it's, that's, it, it's, it's not, one thing is a very high probability that it's gonna cause an issue. Especially if you, potentially you're moving right into it, so. If you're, if you're, if you're concerned, we can do those sections first, but, um, I, I don't. That's up, that's up to you, I guess, I guess I'll put it, put it this way, I'll send Saldo in, if you want to share it with your solicitor, can, that's a better question to ask him as to what he, what he thinks. The proper technique would be to wait or move forward. I, I don't care, I'll, if, if, I'll do, I will prepare whatever you want.
Well, one of the things that, in our zoning ordinance, we have a category called uses not provided for, which calls, if someone comes in, like Millers, when they came in with their sports complex, they worked with us, but someone could come in with a curative amendment, lay it down and you basically have to act on it. But those uses that I got down here, Echo Housing, Wedding Barns, Airbnbs, Home Lift, those are things that have come up to me recently. However, if you look through Andy's list, there's a lot more there that, you know, we're supposed to allow for every use under the sun in the zoning ordinance.
And, and we, we cover everything we think and then the next, next month.
Yes, someone comes in.
Something out of the blue and, I mean, ideas.
Oh, there's so much more stuff now that people want to do, you know, that's not out of the, or that is out of the ordinary.
Right.
I would, I would say this, the, the sections in this, in the zoning ordinance that most need to be revised as a result of the new Saldo, like the Mobile Home, Mobile Home Parks and some of this, like, some of the technical stuff that's Saldo only, that's in your zoning ordinance and some of the cross-references. It's not a, for, I, I guess fortunate, we took, we took, we talked about the Mobile Home Park stuff out of the zone, subdivision ordinance. It's in the zoning, it's, needs to be cleaned up, but it's, it's in there, so it's not like you're not protected. This, and the other stuff we have to clean up is cleaning up cross-references to sections that are just, there, there's two, just conflicts. It's, it's not, if something comes in, then they're, to meet the Saldo, they're gonna have to get, get variances or from, from the zoning. So it's not creating loopholes, it's creating more work for, extra steps for them to jump through to, to develop if, if they want to. So it's not hurting anything, it's just not a hundred percent clean if you, if you do, if you do them separately.
Well, the two in a way should mirror each other, correct?
Right, yeah, and that, and that's the intent here, it's just what's, what's the, you know, is it worth waiting on the Saldo until you finish the zoning? If we go through this, this whole list, it's gonna, it could be this time next year until the zoning's ready. So you might want to move on the Saldo first. It, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be, you're still gonna be protected in the meantime. It's just something, if something comes up, it's gonna be a little bit of a messy process.
But, I mean, the Saldo is ready to look at and send it to Todd and get it approved, okay? So that's kind, we're kind of done with that, right? So why can't we, number one, I think we should do the same way with Andy that we did with the Saldo. And number two, why can't we start it right away?
Well, why Todd's finishing up the Saldo?
Yeah, I mean, we're done with the Saldo.
Yeah.
Why can't we start with the zoning, get it started?
Do we be doing any changes and just be looking at changes?
Yeah, just like we did with the Sal- Saldo, you know.
Just put it on the agenda with the next supervisors.
Yeah, it needs updating.
Yeah.
Let them decide whether to go ahead and go.
Yeah.
Needs updating, then needs updating.
So I recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the Planning Commission to begin working, I wish I knew a shorthand, working, working with Andy on zoning updates. Does that make sense?
Yeah, motions made in the rocks in the second, wrong, is, is there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move, say move.
Speaking of your ordinance dates to like ninety-nine, two thousand, I just dealt with another municipality now that dates to ninety-two. So, if, if you're not the oldest one in the county, there's elders, there's older. But that, that, my recommendation there was, I can't tell you what to do, but I think you, I think you need to fix some things. So, um, because I, honestly, honestly, again, for a municipality like you that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily have a lot of developable area or a lot of development pressure, it's, it's not a big deal. If you, if you're like down Crosskey, if you're down at fifteen to thirty and you have an outdated ordinance, you're gonna pay for it. You know, because they're, they're gonna, they're, when you have, there's, like, we have something, like, St. Sherman Township, Cumberland Township, they, they get a dozen plans a year, at least. You know, if, if there's something missing.
They'll find it.
It, it's gonna be found and exploited really quickly.
Yep.
So, you know, like, we, Hamilton, we're, we're fixing, I thought the standards were pretty good. And then we found, found out that, you know, there's some other things we need to control here, okay, well, we're getting that in place. You know, it, it got, it, what we thought was solid, you know, we, they found loopholes that we didn't think were there.
What you're saying, I, I appreciate, you know, working with you on these things, but you, you have, you're in the front line dealing with that. We know from these different townships what's happened and, we know, but we may not know everything, so we can read the papers, stuff to see.
They, they go for the weak response.
You, you know the inside story of the horror.
Yeah, tell me why, yeah.
The horror stories and we don't know the details, you can do it.
Yes, for better, for better or worse, we do. There, there are more than a few occasions where, occasions where Rob and I have, have talked and, and we, we, we've written in a letter or a plan review or ordinance review, years ago, you need to do this, or something, this is gonna happen. It didn't get, it didn't get done and.
It happened.
It happened, you know, and how much, you know, we can, all we can do is put it on, for us, put it on paper. It's not, it, you know, it's not, it's, we can't make it happen, so. Anyway, that's, that's what, what, like, um, so, well, we can go from there, so let, if, if, let me, just, just let me know if I think it's approved, I'll, I will ship the full Saldo.
Okay.
To move forward and go from there. Um, I just would put it out there, even though I wrote it, it's, they'll do have to go through the pri- the review, formal review process. Needs to, needs, the public hearing needs to be held at least thirty days after you send it to us. That, that type of thing, you're gonna get a letter saying, hey, thank you for letting us help you. But, you know, there's still that process that needs to happen. And if, and if Todd has questions about something, you know, just point them to myself and Scott.
So Saldo is ready to go to the, to the board and to Tom.
Do we need any motions or anything?
I was gonna say, do we need a motion for that?
No, I think your, your work is done, your work is, is done on it, so.
We need something to send it to.
Do we need a recommendation for the?
I mean, to move it forward, so.
Usually, usually that's what, that's when it's done, that's why usually they get the recommendations from the Planning Commission to the board and to supervisors to proceed.
So we'll make a motion to send a Saldo forward to the Board of Supervisors, revise Saldo. Is there a second, second amendment? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In that recommendation, are we also, I'm sorry, are we also saying they should show it to Todd or is that up to them?
Well, that goes without saying.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And, and like, so if you need, need me to have something to present at this, let me know through Gus. What, what, when is yours, when is the supervisors meeting typically?
Second, uh.
Second Thursday each month.
It's on the big board out there.
I get, I get up, I get up to this, this road, this meeting in the vote.
Well, you could commit to the taxes.
I have thirty-four municipalities to, to remember these things for.
April tenth.
April tenth is the second Thursday.
No, I'm just, I was asking. No, I'm just, I was asking to see if it conflicted with any other meeting, any other meetings I have, so, but it doesn't, so. If you, if you need me there to present something, just let, just let me know through GOS.
Thank you, Andy, for your work and, yes, thank you. Continued work.
So I had help.
Is there any other? No, any other, no new business, this isn't a question.
No, only new business was a Tyrone thing, which we can't do anything with.
Right.
I thought it was just more informational for you. I just also wanna reiterate for everyone, large item pickup will be May seventeenth, Saturday from ten to twelve. That's not large item, I'm sorry, electronic drop off.
Electronic, okay.
So if you wanna get rid of your computers and TVs, bring them down.
Does that include the big TVs?
That doesn't include ones with, yeah, tubes and stuff, does it?
It takes all of them.
It takes all those big monstrosities?
Yep. I don't lift them.
They're all recycling.
If you bring one, you gotta pick it up and throw it in.
I think, well, Lattimore had it like six months ago and.
Well, we do it. We do it in the spring. They do it in the fall.
My dad's the people who brought some like box TVs and they took them.
Did they, really?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Is that just for residents or is that for anyone?
That's for anyone who's a customer of waste management.
My TV.
You still have it?
If you have a friend in the township, you can drop it on the.
It's been sitting in my garage for fifteen years.
Well, when we first started this, I had a lot of TVs come in that were sitting in barns that had dirt. Carried it, packed in there by rats.
Yeah.
I mean, it was something.
So, question for you, Matt. You said customers of waste management, but not necessarily Huntington Township residents or?
It fits.
Can, can.
Lattimore Township, Township is waste management.
Yeah, but if you don't have trash pickup in Huntington, if you're not paying waste management for your trash pickup, are you still allowed to?
No.
Right, okay.
You gotta add Lattimore.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
You can slip me five bucks under the table, but.
You know you're unrecorded.
Oh, is that right? That is.
Twice.
Well, I've never turned anyone away, so.
Okay.
I'd rather have them drop them off here than along the road.
Yeah, throw them up there.
That's where they end up, along the road, and we have to pick them up.
Yeah, we're at our place.
So I had, I started the question, I tried to ask.
What?
If the school has ten or twelve TVs, is that permissible to bring those up?
Oh, is that what your question is?
Get them up here.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Are they waste management, the school?
No.
Just asking.
What do you guys do with your trash? Who holds it? Parks.
What color is the container? Blue?
It wasn't, we were advanced before.
It's a container. What color is the container?
It might be back to waste management, actually.
Advanced, yeah.
Yeah, I think they are back to waste management.
Advanced, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause.
That wasn't a problem.
We used to be advanced. Yeah. My trash?
Yeah, bring them up.
Okay. I'm not sure, I mean, we've gotten rid of the hordes of them that we've had through recycling places, but, so there's not that many now.
Well, last time we did it, the dumpster was completely full.
Was it?
It was picking up that they had to take it down or they couldn't haul it on the truck.
Payloader takes it down.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion for the group of the township? Not, not a public comment?
No, no thanks.
None?
None.
Next meeting will be, what, April twenty-eighth? See, May we have reorganization.
It's May, right?
Yeah, May is reorganization.
May is reorganization, so.
So if anybody wants to campaign ahead of time for, for.
Chairman.
Chairman.
Secretary.
April twenty eighth, yep.
Not hearing any other?
I'll make a motion to re.
Motion to re.
Yeah.
Second, general in favor, say aye to a juror.
Well, thank you for your commentary. Please fill out these ethics forms.
I didn't.
There's nothing to be afraid of. Only if you commit a felony.
We, we had the same problem with Sam, is we, we got to throw it inside. And I think we went.
Mike? Mike.
Yeah.
Pickup fee is getting everything about it.
It was Mike.
So I forget who he actually worked with.
So who was the old Jim? Mike Silver.
Old Mike was.
Then it was Dave, then it was Jim, then it was father.
Mike, Dave, Jim.
What? Oh, I gotta shut that off.
Jim died of cancer or something. Really was the one.
I mean, he had a lot of life. At that time, he was turning a lot of.
Yeah, that was Bob.
Yeah, he walked pretty rough. That's, we were talking, we didn't know who, if Dave or Mike was.
Mike Silver, Dave was a year behind.
You know what you're doing?
Nope.
Okay, well then let me do it.
It was just a couple, maybe two weeks ago, yeah, a week.